I hereby open the select board meeting for Monday, or sorry, Thursday to July 9th, 2020 at 5:40 PM. I will call the meeting to order. And since we have some new board members, I think we should read the announcement of open meeting recordings. Is that okay, Mike?
Yep.
Does anybody else want to read it? If not, I can. I have it pulled up.
If you got it, I'd say go.
All right. Announcement of open meeting recordings. Meetings of the select board are recorded for transmission on Rutland Public Access Television in YouTube pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Rutland Select Board will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found at Rutland's website at townofrutland.org. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so in the following manner: by watching Rutland Community Television live on Channel 192 and on the town's website, www.townofrutland.org, or by viewing a recording of the meeting on the town's YouTube page following the meeting. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Rutland's website a video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Thank you, Leah.
Moving on, under number three for our agenda is petitions and applications. We have an application for Milker Brewing Company, one-day liquor licenses for this weekend, July 10th, 11th, and 12th.
These applications are submitted similar to the ones that they did last week. They had not originally intended to open this weekend, but where they had three thunderstorms last weekend, they're looking to make up those days. I should say where we issued those days before, those permits that we issued do still count toward their total number of one-day liquor licenses, even if they closed for the day, that doesn't matter. They still got those licenses, so they count towards the total. So this would be for Friday, July 10th, Saturday, July 11th, and Sunday, July 12th, from 12:00 noon to 10:00 PM.
This is Jeff. I'd make a motion to approve as presented for those two dates.
So I have a motion and a second.
I have a question, Leah, if that's okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is there any conversation, discussion?
What are we at, Mike, for the total number?
This would put them up to 23 out of their 30.
Okay, because I'm guessing too that if the meeting's posted for six, that Kevin probably was gonna join. I guess my only question is to see how it's going with him. I know that he didn't anticipate having to request anymore because he's working on that full-time, being able to serve without the one day. So I just wanted to touch base with him if he comes into the meeting, so.
Yep. Yeah, he is working toward his full license and the... He understands that this comes with the caveat that we talked about the last time, that it must be outdoor.
Right, so everything else is the same in terms of Chief Knight's concerns that he expressed.
Correct. Yep.
And Mike, I had a question. His fees were collected from last weekend and will not be applied because those were already issued and partially used or whatever, right? So these would be...
New fees, yep.
Okay.
Already received.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, comments, discussion? I have a motion and a second, so roll call, please.
Clock, aye.
Still aye. Still aye.
Is Lyndon muted? I can't, I didn't hear anything.
Oh, sorry, Lyndon.
Lyndon's muted.
Oh, Lyndon, you unmuted yourself at the same time. I also did, so why don't you just go and do that? That way, we're not gonna...
Still muted, Lyndon.
Lyndon, can you give a thumbs up or a thumbs down?
Ah, there we go.
Aye, there you go.
All right, Nichols aye, sorry about that.
And Waitman aye. So that's unanimous. Mike, will you follow up with Kevin?
Yep.
Moving on, we have under new business, reorganization of the board.
Through the chair, do you want it as a slate? Or do you want it as individual?
I don't necessarily have a preference. I'm kind of open to what the board is envisioning. Let's do it by position. We have three positions, right? Chair, vice chair, and clerk.
Yes, that would be a slate. So I will make a motion that Mitch Rishetti be chair, myself as co-chair, and Lyndon and Nichols as clerk.
I would like to entertain discussion, see if Leah was interested, as she's one of the seniors.
So I'll step through the chair, I'll step back, and you appoint you, I suggest you as co-chair.
Well, I was gonna second your motion. Are you withdrawing your motion, Skip?
I wouldn't... I'll read my motion.
So are you... Sorry, Skip, I'm off, like, I'm having a little trouble hearing everyone. Are you withdrawing your motion, opening it for discussion, or amending it?
No, I hope...
So I can't...
Withdrawing the...
Okay, thank you.
Mike, can I mute mine? Because my dogs will drive me crazy. That's all I want to speak. Do I have the capability?
Yeah.
Down in the bottom, if you move your mouse down to the bottom, there's, on the bottom left, there should be a mute button.
Oh, there we go. I was going by the picture there.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Will you ask the current chair, yourself, Leah, if there's any interest?
I would be interested if the board is amenable to that.
I would make a motion for Leah to be the chair as the senior board member. No, no, no second. Okay. You can second, Leah.
Can I second myself, Mike?
I'm not sure. Because you're acting chair. A lot of times when reorgs happen, the board does designate someone to kind of run, because the, run the meeting for that portion, just because an acting chair cannot second or vote or make, just have that much in the discussion. So that's why that's been done in the past. I don't know if the acting chair can second.
No, that's fine. I think if there's not a second, that there's not support anyway.
Why couldn't she second? You see three member boards that do it.
I just didn't know. That's what I was saying. It probably could be done. I just, I don't know. That's all I meant.
But she hasn't, she expressed an interest. What's the harm in putting it to a vote?
I guess I'm totally confused. So Skip made a motion, and then there's another motion. Skip's was all three, and Lee and...
Skip was a slate, but then he withdrew.
I'm sorry? Where's Skip?
Skip made a motion as a slate, and then he said he withdrew.
Oh, he withdrew his...
Yeah. Just give me one second. Tamika, sorry, there was some miscommunication here. The meeting time was reposted to 5:30. We did just start not that long ago.
Oh, sorry, I didn't know that.
You haven't really missed much yet. We're in the reorganization section.
Okay, thank you.
So yeah, Skip's original motion was withdrawn, and then Jeff made a motion for Leah to be chair, and that is where we currently are.
And Leah would like to second, she said, if she could, but we don't know if Robert's rules or the structure allows.
That is allowed.
It is allowed?
Yes.
I'll second myself, then, for chair. For discussion, at least. So there's a motion and second, questions, comments, discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Stillings aye.
Clock, no.
Reciting aye.
Nichols aye.
Okay, the motion's defeated, or Waitman aye, motion's defeated for, or three to two. So let's focus on the positions one at a time rather than naming the whole board, okay? So we're still working on chair.
Motion, appoint and nominate Chris Mitch Rishetti as chair. We'll do him on a die for the day.
I'll second that.
Second for discussion, or is there a motion and a second? Any questions, comments, concerns? I just have one question, comment, hesitation. I've heard from a lot of feedback from people, towns residents, their frustration with the way the election went, not the outcome, but the kind of campaigning side of things. And so I just am cautious, and I hope that everyone on the board understands that we have code of ethics as, that we as a town have and are, should have signed and should uphold. So that's just my question, my comment.
Can you clarify that? I don't understand what the ethics issue is.
Not necessarily ethics, code of conduct. I'm sorry, I mean, we do have ethics, but there's also code of conduct.
But how is that in play for the nomination of the positions?
It's just a blanket comment across the board that I had heard feedback from a lot of people in town that have not been, have been very upset with kind of the nasty, how nasty things got, online, on social media especially. And so I'm just putting out there that the town has code of conduct that we need to...
Leah, are you indicating that you believe a member of the board acted inappropriately via an online tool or mechanism?
I personally don't have proof of that. I think that there was very, I had a lot of people come to me with concerns about that, so I just think it's questionable. So I have a motion and a second. We can take a roll call.
Clock, aye.
Nichols aye.
Reciting aye.
Stillings aye.
Waitman aye. Mitch's chair votes three to two. We'll take vice chair nominations.
So do we turn this over now to the new chair, or we continue like we are?
Now as chair, Mitch would take over, yes.
Okay, Mitch, you.
All right.
I would make a motion for Leah for vice chair. Leah Waitman as vice chair. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for Leah Waitman for vice chair. Do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, do we have any questions, comments, points of discussion?
I guess I still have a concern with the comments about the Facebook stuff without any substantial examples or something like that. I don't understand where...
I think you're muted again, Lyndon.
No.
I'd really like to know what that's based on. That concerns me, that that came up as an issue today.
Well, she was chairing the vote. She was the chair of the vote. Reiterating that, you know, hoping that everybody does what's in the best interest of the town.
No, I don't think that that's...
But she didn't give an example of her reasoning. I mean, she said it was people said, but I really would like to know where that's coming from, because that bothers me.
I mean, I think, I haven't been privy to a lot of it because apparently half the town has me blocked on social media. So I've had people reach out to me with concerns of the way things were conducted during the election, handling of, and that's, so I'm putting it out there that the town has code of conduct and that I just hope that we can uphold that.
I 100% concur with the code of conduct needs to be upheld, but I'd like to know if some member on this board had broken that or in any way infringed on that code of conduct, or it shouldn't be just part of discussion, in my opinion. Sorry, you guys couldn't hear me?
I can hear Lyndon. Skip has two devices going on there, it's a double feed.
I think it's coming through both Mike and Skip's feed.
Taking care of that, shut my microphone off.
I don't know where you're coming from either, Leah. I really don't, as far as it not being a legal and professional election and recount.
It wasn't anything about the, I just said, it wasn't anything about the results. It was more the campaigning and the leading up to the election. That was all I said. So, and I'm basing off of feedback that I have from people, that townspeople, because I don't have access to a lot of it.
Well, I know you aren't blocked from anything that I put out there. So I really don't know where you're coming from.
Look, I think it's just, maybe we should just move on. I think this is, obviously, I don't think it's appropriate to kind of bring up allegations against other board members from anonymous sources in town. I just, I also don't think that it really is relevant to kind of what we're doing. We've obviously come off an election that was clearly emotional for half of the electorate, both halves, I mean, the entire electorate, because it was so close. We had a tough recount. This is kind of historically unprecedented. This very rarely happens, and obviously, you know, there's certainly, because of our perhaps national political climate, some tension with different people and different parties and different groups. We've had a lot going on in town between COVID and everything else. So I think if everyone's okay with it, we just move on. If there's any serious concerns, we can talk about those. You know, I myself haven't seen anything that would, I would be considered from this board, any of the members to be offensive or outlying for an election process or procedure in their role on the board, or even in personal roles. And again, with you, Leah, I don't have access to everything on social media. I have seen some posts in public that were divisive, which obviously, you know, things happen and we can't control that. So if everyone's okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Stillings aye.
Waitman aye.
Clock, nay. Nay.
Reciting aye. So we have a motion that was defeated, three to two. Again, we're in the process of reorganizing. We have two positions left in terms of vice chair and secretary. Does any, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll nominate Skip for vice chair.
I'll second. Do we have a motion and a second for discussion? We have a motion and a second for discussion. Is there any questions, comments, points of discussion? Seeing none, we can have a roll call.
Clock, aye.
Stillings aye.
Waitman aye.
Reciting aye. We have a motion that stands three to two. We have one position left at secretary.
I'd like to nominate Leah for secretary.
Second, sir. It's clerk. I believe it's the title.
Clerk, I apologize.
I'm sorry. So Leah for clerk.
Stillings second, sir.
Do you have any discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Nichols yay.
Stillings aye. Stillings aye.
Waitman yay.
Clock, aye.
Reciting aye. We have a motion that's approved. It's unanimous. All right. So we have a reorg of the board. The next item on new business is interdepartmental transfers.
Mike, a different question. We will be having those at Monday's meeting. Yeah, the accountant wasn't sure if we would have some for today, so he asked if they go on the agenda as a just-in-case. Those will be taken care of on Monday when we go to close out the fiscal year. The fiscal year will be closed out officially come July 31st, just because if there's any bills that we receive that are dated prior to July 1st, we still are dealing with those there. So that's why, if you notice, for Monday's agenda, it says warrant 28 and 1. It's 28 for the current, for the previous fiscal year, 1 for the current fiscal year. So that will continue to go on like that. But once those come up, we will be sure to let those go to you. That's also why the Finance Committee is also posted on Monday. Those have to be turned into his office by July 15th, and they require both approval of the Finance Committee and the Select Board.
Okay, thank you, Mike, for the update. The next order of business, our new business would be the Town Administrator Transition. This, just a note for folks watching at home, if you had a first iteration of the agenda, this was added late, just an issue that I think we need to talk about. So, Mike, if you want to just give the board an update on what you can right now, great.
Sure, I have officially turned in my notice of resignation to the Town Clerk's Office. The board has that in their files on the Google Drive due to my recent win in the mayoral election in the City of Gardner. I do want to thank everyone for all of the support and help that you've given me throughout my time here. So the first thing that we would need is a vote to accept from the board for the letter of resignation. Also, in your packets this evening are the previous job posting that was put up for the Town Administrator Search when I was hired. There is a cover page with the town seal on it, and then it got the full description just as it was put forth when Community Paradigm and the town went through the Town Administrator Search the last time. My recommendation would be for the board to post this position after review of the items that are in the posting and post for a period of 15 days to the end of the month, July 31st, to see what applicants come through. The average is 15 to 30 days. I am suggesting that the town go on the shorter side of that, based solely because Barry, Paxton, and Sterling will also be looking soon. So with all of that in the area happening, just to make sure the town gets ahead of that, that's why I'm recommending the 15 days. There are no minimum days, it's just that's normal, normal, it's 15 to 30. So it would be an approval of posting from the board, and then we can put that up now that the board has officially received the notice of resignation. And then in the interim, the board's options would either be to hire an interim administrator, promote a current department head as an acting town administrator, a department head or a group of people to serve as acting administrator and share the role, or to... There's a couple other options that are out there as well, and it's really all on what the board would like to see going forward. And I can happy to answer any of those questions.
Okay, so a couple things just for the board for procedural. Do we want to ask questions first, or we have two items that require action? One would be to accept Mike's resignation, obviously, regrettably. He's been fantastic in his role. The other would be then to post the Town Administrator position as soon as possible, just to kind of cast that net to make sure that we get those folks that are also working at the other regional positions that are posted. On top of that, we have Mike presented us with some options regarding transition. What we can do is we can kind of ask some questions now, and perhaps if we have to talk about personnel issues, we can schedule an executive session at a future meeting to do that. So that's what's on the table now. Do we want to do questions first, or we do, we want to do the action items first?
Through the chair, sir.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So I would make a motion to accept with sincere regret the resignation of Mayor Nickolson effective the date that is discussed Monday, this Monday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, July 14th at 5:00 PM.
There you go.
Not gonna come out early. In fact, you know, I'm tempted to just accept it for, you know, Thursday, three months from now, if you can understand. But I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second for discussion?
I second it.
I have a motion with a second. Do we have any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call.
Clock, aye.
Stillings aye.
Waitman aye with regrets.
Nichols nay.
Reciting aye, obviously, with regrets as well. So that motion was passed, four votes to one. Lyndon, you'll forever be known as the one. So, okay, so there's that. We have action required again on the Town Administrator posting. I'm not sure if you have the ability to be reviewing it right now, it's rest of the board. It's open in front of me, plus we also have probably some discussion to have with Mike about his ideas moving forward about the transition. I'll either entertain a motion or any questions you might have for Mike.
Through the chair, I would like to make a motion that we get this posted ASAP.
Okay, Mike, what would be the soonest we could post so we could put a date on the motion?
Tomorrow, July 10th.
Okay, so we have a motion to post the Town Administrator position as written for July 10th. Just, do we have a second for discussion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, and just so everyone's aware, watching at home, the position, the description is largely unchanged from the first posting. The salary requirements are also in line with the original posting. I believe it was less than two years ago that we posted for this position, so there really haven't been any drastic changes. It'll obviously be up on the website for anyone to review once it's posted. So I'll entertain any discussion.
Through the chair, I have a question, or I guess it's more for discussion, and this is probably for you and for Mike. The, it says with an annual salary of $115 plus or minus, is that still feasible from a FinCom side and, like, from the financial side of town? And also, is that in line with where we want to be as a board?
I guess just to answer your question quickly as I can, Mike, the salary being in line with what Mike is, Mike's current compensation, that was already budgeted, I believe, and baked into the cake for what we need to do for the position. In terms of in line with the board, I'll let Mike answer as to, I'm sure he's looked into comps for surrounding communities and what the other communities are going to be doing, and that could probably give us a better inclination there.
So that is what the exact posting was when I was hired. I came in at a starting salary of $102.5, and then with a step scale of $105, $107.5. The position is currently budgeted at 106.5 because this fiscal year, the way my contract is written, my contract doesn't follow the fiscal year. It starts on the anniversary of my hire. So the, half the year I was making 102.5 and the other half of the year, excuse me, half the year I was making 105, the other half of the year I was set to go into the 107.5, so that's where we get the 106.5 in between there. There is the full reserve account, if you do go higher, you can pull from that. This comparable for the area would probably be around 115, 120. Which is also why if you look at the two police chiefs and the dispatch directors' contract as well as Director Buckley's, those are the four department, those are the three, excuse me, the two chiefs and Director Buckley are the three department heads that currently make a rate higher than the Town Administrator with a starting rate at 108, 115, 120.
So it's in line, it's comparable with
Yeah.
the other, the other large department. And then just as a FYI for the board, that's not necessarily uncommon. You know, for example, the city of Worcester, the Town Administrator is usually the third or fourth highest paid, I'm sorry, the Town Manager, third or fourth highest paid individual in the city. The police chief, obviously being higher, superintendent oftentimes comes in higher, so that's not by any means an insult to the position whatsoever.
A hundred percent correct.
So I'm okay with, I just wanted there to be, make sure that the board had conversation about it.
Through the chair, I, I know that Southbridge is in the final stages of hiring and I, I had heard that they had a substantial amount of decent candidates. I'm not really sure what process they went through. I mean, do we look at some of the other vacancies and, and who their, you know, applicants are to see if we can tap into that?
Mike, do you have any recommendations regarding advertising to be able to get those folks in?
Yes, if you remember, when I was hired, there were two different searches that were run because of issues with finding applicants. I think the, when, when this is approved for posting, I'd go in and I'd put it at the Massachusetts Municipal Association, that's where you'll get 99% of the candidates from. The original posting that the board did last September of 2018 when I was hired, did not go there. It went on the town's website and in the local paper. It really should be in a paper of larger circulation, so for instance, the, there was a telegram rather than in the landmark on the MMA's website because that also gets it in the Beacon, which is the municipal officials of publication that comes out. So when everyone gets that, it'll be listed in there as well. There are some costs associated with these, but I think they're completely worth it if you want a good applicant.
Yeah, and to kind of echo that point, Lyndon, to Mike's point, 99% of people that are municipally savvy that are working for these jobs are using MMA as kind of the primary catalyst to find them. So if, you know, Mike, is there a process to advertising with MMA position? Is that something we can task you potentially with doing?
Yep. It'll come out of the slow boards account and that should be fine.
I see.
Like as members, there's a discount to that, right? Isn't it less expensive for us to advertise?
A hundred bucks.
Yeah, it's not that bad. I, I see that we have a member of the public, their hand raised, individual named Bruce. They're on mute, I'm not sure if there was a question about the process there. Mike, maybe you could use your wizard controls with the Zoom.
Bruce, I'm trying to unmute you here, it doesn't seem to be working on my end, you may have to click that on your end if you'd like to be speak. The chat option at the bottom of the screen, if you can't figure that out, please, please send a message there and I will relate back to the board.
Yep, if you just hit the chat button on the bottom, it should be visible to Mike and he can relay your question. Otherwise, are there any more questions or discussion about the posting? So we have kind of an overview from Mike, salaries in line with regional best practice.
Stillings through the chair.
Go ahead, Jeff.
So if we wanted to expand upon strategies and as Lyndon mentioned, you know, there might be extra applicants from Southborough. Is it too late to schedule perhaps an executive session at the tail end of Monday's meeting? Just in case as a placeholder, in case we want to talk about any names or things of that, of that nature? Strategic nature in appointing an interim or longer term?
I think, yeah, I think to, to just, Jeff, I think that's, that's certainly on the table and I think that was probably the intent to to post to maybe have the discussion about interim or personnel. I do believe though that the posting, we have to post the position for a long-term permanent hire. And that's obviously the procedure we, we have to follow, but the interim, I absolutely agree, that would, that would be in the best interest of the town. Is that kind of what you were, were you?
Yeah, I'm sorry, clarification, interim, interim plan.
Yep, no, absolutely. And I think, Mike, if you can kind of maybe answer to the interim, I know that we had an interim before you. There is kind of a pay scale or a daily rate that a lot of folks charge. There's obviously a difference between that and hiring an internal person. But just where those funds would come from, you can just kind of explain for folks maybe watching at home or on the board that might be questioning where we get the funding to do that.
Sure, so a lot of, if you hire an interim, that money comes out of the Town Administrator Salary Line item. Since you aren't paying for a full-time administrator, the money's already appropriated there and they're doing that work, so you can just take it out of there. A lot of the times, if there is an acting TA, that's an internal temporary promotion, the stipend for the position that is negotiated between that applicant or appointee, excuse me, and the board also comes out of the Town Administrator Salary Line as a stipend because that is in addition to their normal regular duties, so they have to be compensated extra. Again, that comes out of the line item that's already there, if you're not paying an administrator, that's where the money's coming from there.
Okay, and just kind of to throw this out to the board too, because I know that with the, the RFI for the Heights property and Mike can brief the board on that, that we have rolling postings. So there would be a posting, it would end, we could see what we received as results and then immediately we would repost just to maximize kind of the results that we would have. That's something too, where I think Mike's recommendation with the immediate posting and maybe a 15-day turnaround time, we can immediately repost if that doesn't yield any results. But I think that that's probably, in my opinion, a pretty good strategy. If we couple that with the MMA advertising to get in a robust group of people to apply. So we have a motion and a second, I mean, does anyone else have any more questions or comments before we, we take a vote on the posting? Okay, seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Clark aye. Both aye.
Stillings aye.
Whitman aye.
And Recity aye. Okay, so the two action items that we needed to take have been completed. Mike, we'll handle the, about the interim, we can handle that in your executive session or if you have recommendations you'd wanted to make now and then we can talk about it again on Monday. It really is up to how you want to handle that with your department that's, or the folks that you consider.
I would suggest we do that in an executive session, I can give a general overview now. But I can tell you what some other towns have done when they end up in this is some will go with both an acting and an interim. So the acting is a internal department head who is bumped up to a temporary Town Administrator Position until the board can either find an interim or a full-time TA, that's when you give them a stipend. In the meantime, nine out of 10 times, it's either a police chief, fire chief, or the DPW director. And it kind of varies on those three positions depending on where you look. In terms of interims, people have gone out and posted for interims and done interviews for interims. Or the last time Margaret knew Bob, from what I'm told, obviously I wasn't here for that one as that happened for me to get here. But things like that, some people know people who are retirees who are interested in just helping out for a little bit. Similar to what I said before, nine out of 10 times, finding a retiree who wants to work in the summer is a hard call. But those are just different options that have been done before. An interim is not required anywhere in policies or mass general law. It's just normally done as a way to keep things afloat with expertise until you can find someone there. Nine, I hate to say this again, but nine out of 10 times, an interim is used if you know something is coming up. Like for instance, when Margaret left, we knew that there was a special time meeting coming up soon that had a big zoning bylaw on it, which was the marijuana bylaw. So there was some idea, I'm guessing, again, I wasn't here, that there should have been someone with experience in the TA position to guide the town through that while we went through the Town Administrator Process. But we also had a failed search in September that had to reopen again in November. So someone to just carry us over through that time. Interims can last anywhere from four weeks to three months, which is what we had. I think, Skip, correct me if I'm wrong, or Leah and Jeff, we had Bob for four months?
Yeah, it sounds about right.
Yeah. So it really all depends on what the board would like to do, how many applicants you receive. Some people have an acting through the first round of applications that they have and then if they don't see anything that makes them jump or someone who they would like to hire, that's when they go for an interim, just because you've been coasting that far and then you want to take some action, so you hire an interim there. Again, it's all on the pleasure of the board. And we can talk more about that in executive session on Monday because it does fall under the Personnel, Non-Unit Personnel Negotiations Strategies requirement of the open meeting law.
I think we should talk about it in exec session.
Great. Okay, so Mike, did you need more action items from us to kind of facilitate the movement of this forward or are we all set for it right now?
We're all set for now, it'll get posted tomorrow and a notification will go out to you while it has been posted. At least on the town's website, I will update you when it goes to the paper and to the MMA as well.
Okay, thank you. Before we, we move on, we have no other business, we'll move on to adjournment. Do we have any questions, comments from the public, anyone in the chat room? Just to make sure that individual that tried to ask a question earlier is heard.
Mitch, just one last quick thing I probably shouldn't mention. Yes, we advertise in the MMA, however, the MMA charges by character in the posting. So a lot of what it does is there's a brief paragraph and then a link to the town's website where you can actually see the official posting that way.
I noticed that, so I guess just if it's okay with the rest of the board, you can just give Mike the leniency to use his best discretion in what that character count is going to say, obviously, Mike, nothing embarrassing. And then link it to the town materials.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, any other business to come forth, board? If not, I'll, I'll field a motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second and discussion. Seeing none, I'll take a roll call vote.
Clark aye. Both aye.
Stillings aye.
Whitman aye.
Recity aye, thank you everyone and enjoy the rest of your evening.